City Hall and the Monday, May 24th, 2021 meeting of the South St. Paul School Board. Will you please take the role, Lisa?
Inspector Roche.
Here.
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector LaLaverde.
Here.
Inspector Aron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Diaz.
Here.
Chair Walker.
Here.
At seven present at six o'clock.
Thank you. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, good evening. Tonight, we've got a really fun quality in action, but of course, we've got to get through the approval of the minutes first. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the meeting agenda and the minutes.
So moved.
Jump right in. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll just say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And that passes the meeting agenda and minutes are approved, and I will hand it over to our Activities Director Chad Saxauer. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hey, thank you for having us. It feels like I was just here, like about a month ago, right? Kind of talking about winter events, winter athletics. Thanks for having us back. Tonight, I have with me all as many advisors, right, that we could pull together and ask them to bring a student with them of all the things that were taking place again, right, in our building just throughout the fall, winter, and spring. So many wonderful leadership opportunities for kids. Once again, chasing passions of vocal performances and finding ways to be involved through instrumental music, acting, robotics, speech, debate, knowledgeable, social justice. I mean, there's just so many cool things that kids continue to find, and it continues to evolve, right? I mean, it's not just still a really cool mathlete, right, the math team thing, but we're also finding ways to enhance that, of starting to pull in robotics and finding ways of not just having it continue to be debate, but finding knowledgeable. So we are looking and thinking and trying to find every opportunity as kids bring things forward. As an activities department, we're just trying to find wins and trying to find ways of getting things going. I can't wait till the day some kid comes to me and says, I want to have a drone club, and all of a sudden, I get to start seeing drones fly all over our campus. I'm really looking forward to it because I'm sure it's going to happen. So I'm going to keep things really short, and I'm going to try and turn things over to our advisors and let them talk a little bit about the wonderful things that they did throughout the winter with one of our athletes. To start us out this evening is our speech coach, Ms. Ceele McDonald, and she has Nicole Kelly with her. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Our season was a little strange this year because it was 100% virtual. Every practice that we had, every competition that we had, and the students just really learned to roll with it. It was an incredibly successful season overall. And Nikki, who double-entered, finaled many times, including times in which she finaled in both of the events that she was at. She came very close to qualifying for state. And our younger team members, the last invitational that we had, they were great. Nikki's sister finaled for the first time, and another student got her first one in a round, which means of the ones that she was competing against, she was ranked first. And she didn't quite make the final round that time, but she just really had her best performance. It was a great way to end the season. So I am going to leave it in Nikki's capital hands. Thank you so much for inviting us.
Hi. Yeah, so I've been on the speech team since I was in seventh grade. I joined because my older sisters weren't on it. And it was just kind of fun to try out a bunch of different events and then kind of grow throughout the team. And then the last two years, I've been the captain of it. So I think just like the great thing about speech is that it really made me feel more comfortable with myself. I got more comfortable with my speaking. And then also, it's like this year, some of my speeches, I did on more like personal topics to me. So I just think that speech is a good way to help like put yourself out there and also raise awareness for different issues. Because like in my poetry speech this year, I discussed eating disorders, which is something I had struggled with, and also with my sexuality. So all of these things just helped me feel a lot more comfortable in myself. So I would encourage other kids to join speech and then just help make others feel welcome. And I wish that I could do speech in college, but it's just really not offered in most places. Otherwise, I totally would. I guess I don't really know what else to say about it. I just encourage everyone to try it out.
Nicole, if you just want to stay here one second? So great opportunity. Once again, you talk about like kids and things. So Nicole would never come out and say this, right, but Nicole was our AAA winner for our school on the female side. So outstanding in so many different areas like this, not only just speech, but theater. What else? I mean, you do everything.
Cross-country.
Cross-country, yep, track. So she was an outstanding athlete, cross-country track qualifier, a bunch of different times for state tournaments. Has been dealing with some feet injuries, right, kind of the last two years, but also an IB student, right, 4.0, off the charts, right, just genius. So she won it for our school, then she goes into our region and was the winner of 16 schools. So beat out students from Eastview and Prior Lake and Lakeville North and South, like so just, you know, high flyers and went on to represent South St. Paul in the state with their eight finalists. Last year, we had John Danine on the male side. I think before that was Laura Sunday back in like 2013 was the last time we had had a female. So Nicole's just outstanding, just like all these other kids that are going to be coming up here. These are just the great things that we see. I get to see every day at our school, and even Wednesdays at Connections, right? So wonderful. Questions for Nicole?
Nicole, what are your plans for the future?
Um, yes, I'm going to be going to the University of South Dakota. I am going to be majoring in kinesiology and sports science. I'd like to be a physical therapist when I'm older. And I'm also going to be running for their cross-country and track team.
Oh, wow.
Cool.
Fantastic.
What categories did you compete in in speech?
Um, so my first year, I did storytelling. And so I was in seventh grade and eighth grade, I did duo with my older sister. And then from ninth through 12th grade, I did poetry. And then this year and last year, I also tried poi, which is program oral interpretation. And I really enjoyed all of those.
Cool.
Fantastic. I was on the speech team for six years, so I can...
I was on the speech team.
So I can admire the pluck that I take. And I also judged the virtue, some of the virtual speech meets for a different, for a different district. And it was a little different, but hey, we can do everything else over Zoom, so.
Interesting to see how kids adapted to the like online version because now they kind of almost use the camera as a prop, especially in poi. So like they'd get up like really close and like use it kind of like as a theater curtain, and they'd like hop off screen and all this stuff. So it was like different, but it was interesting to be able to experiment with new things.
Yeah.
Very good.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah.
Round of applause.
Great job. Kind of sticking with the theme of just like being able to kind of to talk and be able to speak to some of those groups. I'm going to have Women's Society kind of come up. So Ellie Ritser and Ramola would kind of come forward. It's the same thing, right, using their voice, right? This is a new organization within the last five years. It's just phenomenal to see. So I'll let them explain.
Hi. So my name is Ellie Ritser. I'm the advisor for Women's Society over at Secondary. We are one of the affinity groups, and we focus on creating a safe and welcoming environment for students to come and learn about injustices facing women in our society and our community. So this year, a little different with COVID, but we still got to do some of the things that we've done in years before.
Ellie, come right up to the microphone, if you would.
Is that better?
Yeah, the mic's right in front of you there, so thank you.
So one of the things that we still got to do this year was our annual movie night that we do in collaboration with the Black Pride Organization to celebrate both Black History Month and Women's History Month. And so students who come and complete a short reflection that talks about the racism and sexism they see in the movie have the opportunity to earn extra credit in their classes. So I'm going to introduce one of our student leaders. This is Ramola. She's been student leader for three years now, and she just does a fantastic job. She's just going to talk about some of the other events that we've done this year.
Hi, my name is Ramola Awadala. Women's Society started my freshman year, and then I became a board leader my sophomore year, and I've been a board leader ever since. This year, we had to pull together a prom drive. So basically, what the prom drive was, was we gathered as much prom, as much prom dresses as we could, and then we'd just give them out after school if anyone needed an extra one. So that was really nice. My favorite event ever during Women's Society was definitely redecorating the school nursing room. I didn't know that there was a nursing room in school, so that was really nice to do as well.
Wonderful. Do you have questions?
Yes.
Hi, I was just wondering, how many, how many students do you have in your group? And then the second question would be, have you been seeing the group grow each year? Because like you said, you've been on and out for several years. So is your group growing and expanding?
Yeah, definitely. So as we grow as a group, our first year, it was mostly seniors and a couple freshmen, including myself. And it started out very small. It was maybe like 10, 15 kids. Now, pre-COVID, it was, it reached up to like 30, and every year, we keep growing and growing. Obviously, with the fallback of COVID, it's been kind of on the lower end of 20s.
Okay, good. Thank you. And so you still have one more year left, right?
No, I'm a senior.
Oh, you are.
My duty is done.
Oh, my gosh.
Passing the torch along.
Nice.
Yeah.
What are you doing after?
I'm going to the University of Minnesota at the College of Biological Sciences, and I'll be studying biochemistry and genetics.
Oh, my gosh. Wonderful.
My plans for the future is to be an oral surgeon, so I got a lot of learning ahead of me.
That's amazing. It is. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Congrats, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I stacked my Connections class. I get to see her on Wednesday, too. Good. Let's have Mr. Arbison at Key Club kind of come forward with Addie Wasco. So come on up, you
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessie Arbison. I am the Key Club advisor, as well as a special education teacher at the high school. This is my fourth year as Key Club advisor. With me, I have Addison Wasco, who will talk to you in a moment about what we've done. Typically, we focus on philanthropy and community engagement. So we go out of the community. We typically do like a canned food drive around Halloween and things like that. So you'll see us trick-or-treating for canned goods. We didn't do it because of COVID this year, but we will talk about all that we have done. Addison is a senior this year. She will be going to Creighton for nursing. So no further ado, ask them.
Hi. So this year, we had to be really flexible just because most of our stuff is volunteering, and we couldn't do a lot of it because of COVID. And like my favorite event he talked about is the trick-or-treating for canned goods. That's just super fun with my friends. We get to go out on Halloween. So that was one of my favorite things we've done in the past, but it was sad because we couldn't do it this year. A few highlights from this year, where we wrote letters to residents at the nursing home I work at. So it was a fun thing we got to do. We also gave treats to the administrative support workers at our school. So it was awesome. And we also recently, just last week, we did a trash cleanup. So we went around with gloves on, so we were COVID-safe, and picked up trash in the neighborhoods around our school. And I've really just enjoyed being in Key Club. I have been for the past four years. Just, it's been fun to give back to our community and also just make friends through it. So I was the vice president last year, and then I've been president this year. So it's been awesome.
Good job.
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Our next one, we'll just kind of keep going with our student leadership stuff. So if I could have Ms. Bauer and Ms. Wagner kind of come forward from Student Council.
Hi, my name is Kim Bauer, and I teach second grade at Lincoln Center, but I also am the high school student council advisor. I think this is my fourth year, probably. So our board this year is, our president is Emma Bauer, who is not here tonight. Our vice president is Ella Wagner. Our secretary is Ramola, who you already met. Many of these students are student council as well. And Melissa Burchchild is our social media slash treasurer. So that's our board. We have about, I'd say, over 50 members, but we, our goal is to get some more. It's been a little bit tough this year. We started in August, and we started outside. And that was a wonderful opportunity. We switched to virtual, and then we let the seniors come together by following the rules of the number of students we could have. So in Student Council, we are, we're the school spirit group, and we do two blood drives every year as our action piece. We were, we had to table those until next year. But our goal is really to just promote school spirit, school leadership, and it was tricky. But we did it. And Ella's going to talk about some exciting things that we did. Go ahead, Ella.
Yeah, so my name is Ella. I am the vice president of Student Council. And just like many of these other groups, we had to overcome a lot of different obstacles that COVID sent our way. We had to get very creative, and we were able to pull off homecoming week this year, which was a huge success. Even though we didn't get to have our normal dance, we decided to create a new activity that we could involve the whole school called Medallion Hunt. And so we would go out and it's a hunt with many different clues throughout the week, and you would get in small groups and try and find the hidden medallion for a prize. And we, it was such a big hit that we brought it back for our spring fling, which was a few weeks ago. And we also were able to just pull off our whole homecoming with our away game. We got to do our homecoming as an away game, and homecoming was just great this year. So I'm really proud of us.
I was very proud of the students because they really had to think out of the box, right? I mean, so we had our typical dress-up days, and, but we created social media accounts so that kids that weren't at school could send in their pictures of College Day, or Jersey Day, or Pyjama Day. So we kind of went to the social media route. We did a TikTok challenge for Stand Up and Cheer, the fight song. Who got the most likes? He, he, the young man that won had over 30,000 likes for his Stand Up and Cheer TikTok challenge. We had the scavenger hunt, or medallion hunt. And in the spring, we tried to do a chalk talk event. Everybody in town, anywhere you would see a chalk event, you'd snap a selfie of yourself by it. And we played a tag game. It was new. It didn't take off that great, but there's potential for it to learn. If businesses would put up a sign, our Stand Up and Cheer for our seniors this year posters, anybody in town could go find a poster, take a selfie in front of it, post it to the Student Council Insta page, and then the one with the most tags wins the candy basket. So I applaud the students for really thinking outside the box. And when Ella says it was a successful homecoming, you have to imagine the surrounding area's canceled homecoming.
Great.
They all canceled, but we didn't. We did it. And, and it's hats off to the kids for making that happen. I'm very proud of them.
Nice job.
Wonderful.
And Ella, tell them, tell them what you're going to do next year.
Yeah, so I am going to be going to St. Mary's University in Winona. I got into an accelerated five-year master's program there with the Mayo Clinic for Physician Assistant Studies.
So awesome.
That's a good point.
We also brought the clues with us for our medallion hunt, and we'll leave them with Lisa Brandtaker, and you can see how good you are at solving the clues.
Right.
A lot of South St. Paul history.
It's pretty difficult, let me tell you.
I have Google.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Our next group, Ms. Lipke with CDLU, and Sophia Vaz will come up and kind of continue the theme of just student leadership and the use of our voice. Ready?
Hi, everybody. I'm Shannon Lipke, the cultural liaison at the high school, and also the advisor for CDLU, which is Comunidad de Latinos Unidos. It was the first of now four affinity groups that we have at the high school. And those groups were initiated by and organized by students. It started back in 2016 with CDLU, and now we have BPO, the Black Pride Organization, P SAGA, the Sexuality and Gender Alliance, and Women's Society, who you heard from Ramola and Ellie earlier. Our CDLU mission is to celebrate the different Latino cultures that are within the South St. Paul community while striving for high academic achievement. And really, it's meant to serve as a safe space for students to come together and be able to talk about really tough topics like racial stereotypes and racial inequities that our students, our Latino students and our BIPOC students regularly experience. Because the affinity groups are intentionally student-led, I think it's really important to have Sophia continue to talk about what CDLU is and all that they have accomplished. I am so honored to be able to stand next to and work with Sophia. She has been one of the CDLU leaders for the last three years, and really, I consider Sophia a leader of the entire school because she absolutely embodies what we strive for all of our packers to be, the unique, passionate learners who are positively changing this world. And I'm really excited that you have the opportunity to hear how Sophia is doing that.
Yay. Hi, how are you?
Doing well.
Good. All right. Before I start, I do want to tell you a little bit about myself. Before I attended South St. Paul, I went to a private school that wasn't very diverse. And because of that, I was bullied a lot for being Latina or being Indian. And it was really hard for me because I've never, ever had a teacher of color in my 13 years of going to school. And not being able to see people who look like me in leadership positions was, it made me question my identity. It made me question my worth. And I really wanted to change who I was, you know? But after I came to South St. Paul and I joined CDLU, I was able to connect with people who had the same culture as me, the same experiences as me. We were able to talk about, you know, the tacos we liked, our favorite, you know, Spanish artists, but we were also able to talk about the issues that affected our community, you know? In the four years I've been in CDLU, I've learned so many different leadership skills. I've learned how to organize different projects, different events. We had soccer tournaments, dances. We've had POC career panels where kids can network. I've learned how to organize a social media campaign during quarantine. Because we couldn't be in person, I created these Get Out There in Quarantine videos, which translates to Stay in Quarantine videos. They're cute little comedy bits about different things you can do while you're at home. And one's on the South St. Paul Twitter, if you guys want to go check it out. We also sent out inspirational text messages to students throughout the school day so they could sign up for a chain, and they could get a text every morning, just, you know, giving them a little bit of motivation to get through the day because this year's been pretty hard. And then I've also helped with the SASH proposal that was accepted back in 2019. Take span on it. We've added affinity group cords, so students who are part of the affinity groups can wear those with pride to show the work that they've done in high school. And I really hope you understand how much we appreciate the school board's support with these affinity groups. It has really made a difference for the BIPOC students here. And we really know that there has been so much improvement, but there's also way more room for work. And, you know, student equity, there's a lack of it in the American school system, and it's really important to give your students a voice. Every voice matters. So I want to just thank you guys all. And I'm excited to see where these next four years take me, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Did you hear the story it's taking you?
Oh, yeah. So my involvement in CDLU has shown me that I'm really interested in politics. So I'll be attending McAllister College next year and studying political science and economics.
Didn't I tell you? I said she should be in political science. I, yes!
Thank you.
Yes! That's so awesome.
You have some support here.
Thank you.
Goodness, she's honest.
As you could tell, and the cool thing, right, is this isn't anything that was even happening 10 years ago, 25 years ago, right? Like, all of these things, right, Student Council, yes, but otherwise, the ability to kind of change, pivot, see where kids are going is really what so much of our work is about, in trying to find that every voice matters. And it's completely by kids, right? These advisors are there as guides and kind of support. It's just super fun to be a part of. I'm learning from them. So many bright women here. I'm just learning constantly. Let's turn towards to our math team. Mr. Luke Olson and Esther, come on up.
My name is Luke Olson, and by the way, I had 45 minutes that I was going to talk, and Bill said 45 seconds. Seconds. So I think the most important thing about the math team this year is it happened. Because normally, a math meet has somewhere between 75 and 200 kids altogether in one spot, and that was frowned upon this year. So the leagues did some work to get it online, and then we transitioned to online. And, you know, nobody learns more in these growth times of the kids than the teachers and the advisors. And I'll talk about the first, so I have the junior high on the high school team. The junior high first practice that we, it was when, last fall, when we were in hybrid. And so there were a couple of kids in my room, and I had to Google meet on and everything. And I said, let's practice a team event. So, you know, I've got the camera, and I'm doing stuff. I don't hear a sound, not a sound. So I, after, you know, five minutes, I go on, I say, guys, this is the team event. You're supposed to share. You're supposed to talk to each other, whatever, whatever. 10 more minutes or however long, I gave them silence. So I sit down, guys, what you got to do is you got to work to get, one of them says, Mr. Olson, we put it in the chat. We were just fine. We, they had the communication all there. Stay out of our way, old man. We're, we're fine. So on the high school level, we had a great season. We had, like other organizations, the pandemic made numbers are not high, but the ones that were there were super committed and I think learned a lot of math. I'm going to let Esther talk about her experience.
Yeah, so I'm Esther. I'm a senior. I've been on the math team since eighth grade. This year, I was captain. Yeah, it was definitely a different experience this year because usually one of the super fun things is going to the math meets when there are a ton of other schools there. You get to have some snacks and just chill out in between events. And it was difficult with the team events, like he was saying, because we didn't have the same face-to-face interaction. But we still, we, I guess, learned different ways of communicating with each other and learning how to help each other. And I know that's one way math team has helped me, is learning how to mentor and help other students, whether it's with, with the math problems or just with school advice, since I'm older. And, yeah, math team has taught me that I definitely do not want to go into mathematics. But it's taught me the importance of exercising my brain because even if I don't want to do that, it's like doing a logic puzzle. It can be fun, and once you get the answer, it's really satisfying to celebrate with your teammates and, yeah.
Esther has been an amazing mentor to our younger kids, even down to the junior high level, who have learned to look up to her, but not in a, like scary she's up their way, but like as a friend. Do you want to tell what you're doing next?
Oh, yeah. So next year, I will be going to Goucher College, which is a small liberal arts place outside of Baltimore, Maryland.
Oh, wow.
And I will be studying French Studies and Education in a 4-1 Masters of Education program.
Wow.
Wow.
Great job, Esther. Esther's going to be here for a while, so just make sure.
I want to point out, before we start again, Mr. Olson, where did you go to high
South St. Paul, class of 80. Love it. And you were, before that?
60-something.
And you were?
91.
91. And?
75.
75, that's right. So we got a couple generations of South St. Paul grads here.
Decades of honor.
90.
90. All right. Cool.
Thanks, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Devine. I'm the band director at the secondary. And so this was not a typical year for us. Normally, we have tons of activities. We put on a few, we put on three concerts normally. But because of safety concerns, we didn't do a lot of it this year. But we were able to do a few of our activities. We normally do our marching band or pep band.
We normally do our marching band, our pep band, our kind of our big ones. We unfortunately weren't able to do it because of safety concerns, but we were able to still have our winner drum line and then our jazz band and show band, which Esther is our representative. She's our piano player in both of those groups. So we had a lot of challenges this year with doing, you know, rehearsing as a band and not having upcoming performances. We had to really focus on just learning skills and not necessarily preparing specific songs for our performance. So it was a great opportunity to build good foundations. And so that was our big opportunity this year. We also got to wear funny masks that like overlapped, they're safe when they play their instrument, their French horn or whatever instrument. And then we had little covers on the bells so we could stay all safe. And we are playing at graduation, so we will have a performance this year. But with our extracurricular groups, we, I'll talk about the drum line a little bit because they're not here. But they had a couple competitions throughout the years. Well, it was a little bit bigger group this year, actually, than last year, which is good. So they, they just did some virtual competitions and that's what they did. And they had a performance for their parents and family members and friends at the end of the season. And then we were also able to offer our jazz band, show band, which are pretty much, they're essentially the same group, it's all the same kids, for the most part. The jazz band, we normally would be playing at all of our concerts, we'll go to the rotary club and play. And our goal is to do some more outreach, but that kind of got put on hold for now. And our show band accompanies our show choir, which we'll hear more about in a little bit. We were able to have a performance for our show choir and with the show choir for, at the end of the season thing. And jazz band, we just really focused on some of our skills. And so that's about it for me. Esther will talk about her experiences, I suppose.
So I've been in the jazz band since eighth grade, again, as the piano player, yep. And that, I'd say the hardest thing about this year is we really didn't have any jazz band rehearsals of any kind for a few months. And like, the extracurricular bands, it's something I always look forward to because it's just a fun way to feel the music, have fun with friends, et cetera. And even though we didn't get to have any performances at the rotary or any, or at any concerts, it was kind of fun to have the emphasis be more on just enjoying the music, trying some new things. As Mr. Devine said, build the foundations. So it, it worked out, yeah. And with the show band, for both bands, we had a bit of a smaller group this year just because of COVID. And though show band, it, it ran a little longer than usual, but it was, like jazz band, the emphasis was just kind of on enjoying things, on enjoying the music. Because our only performance was for family and friends. And I could not have really asked for a better last show band, show choir performance because, like, the energy was really good, it just felt really great. And, yeah, and I plan on continuing music in college, in the different ensembles, yeah.
Great.
I think you could stand here for Mr. Olson, too. Our theater director, Mr. Art Olson.
Hey, everybody, thanks for having us here. We had 66 students involved in theater this year, which is a lower number than many other years, but I still feel pretty, pretty glad that we had that many kids get involved. These were 66 different individuals, some of them in one show, some of them more than one show, some of them actors, some of them technicians, some of them did both. But it was a good year, it was a difficult year. We had, it was a year of learning a lot of new skills. And probably the most important skill I think everybody learned is perseverance and sticking with it. And the show must go on, right? And so we found ways to make the show go on. This is our first ever, well, this year, as Mr. Sexauer mentioned before, we had our first ever outdoor musical with The Big Bad Musical this fall. And this is our first year we had, we streamed all of our shows. Three of them were live-streamed. The Winter One Acts, we had Passing Periods of Pomegranate Prep and The Actors Nightmare. Our spring high school play, we had The Complete Works of William Shakespeare. Esther was narrator one in that. And then our spring middle school play, which closed, sort of, it's not actually closed yet, more than that in a second, but we did A Wrinkle in Time. I want to do some shout-outs of some of our students. Our seniors this year, the ones who are going to be losing, unfortunately, to other programs who will be gaining for sure, are Emma Bauer and Esther Everson, Louisa Hammond, Nicole Kelly, I think was still here. She's one of my extraordinary techies. Shaitan Kruger, Amalia Meyer, and Stephen Sparks. I want to give some shout-outs to some other kids, too. Ruby Wellness did a great job doing the one acts as the lead in Actors Nightmare. Emma Bauer played the Googler in Complete Works, which is a really fun role. Amalia Meyer played the Scholar in Complete Works. Esther was narrator one in Complete Works. Jump back to, since she's standing right up here, and appropriately wearing black, she was also the executioner in the one act. Molly Schmidt played Juliette Nofelia in The Complete Works. Casey Creer played Hamlet in Complete Works. And then we had a newcomer playing the lead in Wrinkle in Time this year, Natalie Klain, seventh grader, came in, first play ever, and she just rocked it. Kaylee Contreras is, she's only an eighth grader, but she's definitely one of my veterans, played Charles Wallace in Wrinkle. Jamison Hammond played the role of Calvin in Wrinkle. And then Rayleigh Drews played the crazy role of Mrs. Watson. We've got some fun stuff coming up, including this Friday. I'd like to encourage everybody, check this out, where we have an encore performance of Wrinkle in Time, which will be, it's a stream of mostly of our Friday show. And we also cut in a performance of our newsie into that as well. But that'll be at 7 o'clock on Friday, and tickets for that are available on showticketsforyou.com. So if you missed Wrinkle in Time, it's a great chance to see that, it was a fantastic show. And a show that went through a lot of challenges, the entire cast and crew got quarantined for two weeks, the two weeks before opening night. So that got pushed off three weeks, but, you know, the kids stuck with it and I really give kudos to them for that because it was, it was a lot to deal with, but they did it. This summer, we have a couple of shows coming up. The Junior Players will be doing a show called Space Princess Wars, which is going to be a hoop. Auditions are coming up for that on June 7th and 8th. Performances will be July 15th and 16th. And then our community musical this summer will be Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dream Coat. I haven't heard yet if Luke Olson's going to be in that, but maybe. I'm going to do a hard press to get him in there. Auditions for that will be June 14th and 15th. And then performances July 29th to August 1st. So we're really looking forward to pressing forward and also looking forward to some of the COVID restrictions hopefully starting to fall away as they seem to be, so. Yeah, Esther, do you want to talk again?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So theater, I've been in since seventh grade. It means a lot to me. It was the first way I really met anyone because my family was completely new to Minnesota in my seventh grade year. And one of the first people I met through web was Emma Lewis, and she was a big person in theater. And she encouraged me to join, and here I am. And it, this year has been a lot of fun. Doing the outdoor musical with The Big Bad Wolf was hot, but very fun. And being able to be in the competition play as the executioner really pushed me as an actress and was just overall fun. It was a great cast. Sometimes we had a hard time getting back on track, but it was, it was a good time nonetheless. Yeah, I, I don't know, it's, it's a great program. Mr. Olson is great. Yeah, it's fun to see the future of theater, like, in watching Wrinkle of Time. When I, when I watched that, I mean, I enjoyed it, but I also got really excited about seeing the kids who will carry on the program, so.
Yeah, that's it, I think you, I don't know, how many of these do I give you? We have one final person, and I'm going to have Stephen Cochran and Claire Shannon kind of make their way up here. So show choir is a big thing, right? And, man, I don't pat myself on the back very much, but way to go with this one, Chad, because Stephen is, he's the real deal. Like, he is a hot commodity, and he's only like 22, right? And he's more mature than I am, there's no doubt about it. And so with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Stephen Cochran, our show choir director. Stephen?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Like Chad said, I am brand new to the district. I just graduated from the University of St. Thomas as well, over the weekend, so.
Oh, congratulations.
Again, yeah, this is my first year here, obviously a very strange year to start a new job, but definitely an amazing experience to have. This year, we had, we were a little down in numbers like everyone else. We had about 20, 21 choir members and five show band members. Again, Mr. Devine, back here, my partner in crime, leading the show band, and they did amazing things this year as well. This year was all about making the most out of, you know, the limited time and space that we had this year. But thankfully, we were able to get a bunch of stuff done. We had our Famous Sweethearts fundraiser. That happened right around, well, Valentine's Day, in February, we were able to get that done. We were supposed to go and compete at North St. Paul a couple weeks ago. Unfortunately, like Mr. Olson had said, we, both of our groups had to quarantine right before that happened. So unfortunately, we were not able to do that. But we were able to put on a performance a couple weeks ago for family and friends, which was a super rewarding thing that the kids really enjoyed doing. Speaking of kids, one of my senior leaders, one of my captains this year is Claire Shannon, and I'll let her talk about her experience.
Hi, my name is Claire Shannon. I've been in show choir since, well, junior high show choir since I was a seventh grader, so I've been able to participate in our junior high program, as well as our JV and then our varsity. I was lucky enough to be a captain this year, and it was honestly just a huge blessing to get to do show choir at all. It was not something I was expecting coming out of the summer and last spring, just because of the fact that I know singing was definitely one of the things that they were pushing away from. We definitely had to overcome a lot of adversity this year, just like all the other groups, just like Coach Steve said, we were quarantined for a couple weeks as a group, as well as the shutdown in the whole district or the school. But also, the adversity with show choir didn't necessarily start this year. My four years on varsity show choir, I had three different coaches. So it was a lot of ups and downs for us, but I feel really lucky that we were able to end my senior year with Coach Steve, and I'm really excited about where the program might go from here. Show choir was definitely a really pivotal experience for me in high school, and it really gave me a real home and a family. And Coach Steve and Mr. Devine, I'm sure, are going to take it great places over the next few years, and I'm excited to see where it goes.
What's your plans for next year?
I'm going to the University of Nebraska-Lincoln with an undeclared major. I apparently don't have my life together as much as I know. I really like everything, so I just couldn't quite narrow it down to one spot, so I'm just going to go in with an open mind.
That's great. Have fun.
You know, Coach Steve is there calling, I thought it was a pretty, it was a great moment at the show choir event when the seniors, he was walking around with a T-shirt with all their pictures. So the kids had created something for him, right? Through this year of not kind of having normalcy and doing things via Zoom or Google Meets and trying to find ways, board games, like he had just kind of drawn them together. And then he's just super passionate, he's got all these connections. And he's just like all of our other advisors, right? I mean, he's just kind of hit the ground running and it's 365, 24/7, and he's just constantly asking great questions and coming up with ideas and looking for ways to just grow and get better. And then we share the fact that we're both from Iowa, so we're great people, which is dynamite. That's it for us tonight, I'll be back in two weeks with our spring groups to kind of do this again. A big shout-out to everybody, this past Saturday, right, we had the Stride for Packer Pride, so once again, the Coonahan Schultz family, what they just continue to do to provide for our activities department. And I know everybody here has their wallet in it and their hand in it somehow, some way. It was great to see people back together on Saturday morning, whether you were running or walking. It was just a great event. So far, over like $14,000. We're hoping to maybe get another $1,000 or $2,000 in said event. So that was fabulous, right? We were able to get through our activities awards. We didn't have a banquet, but we got 41 seniors in the auditorium, were able to recognize them in a way. With them here, no parents, but got to see kids' faces that, once again, like I said, I hadn't seen Wagner for much of the school year, so getting to see them again was just ever lifting for me. And it was a nice event. So I will be back in two weeks and have a whole other group of kids with me, so thanks for your time. I know we got a big, busy platform, so.
Sophia's going to change the world through politics? Oh my gosh, she's amazing. I've seen her all around.
We do have another big group coming in for our next party in action items over here. Take a minute here and let the room turn over, if you will. One of my colleagues up here, Linda, said, "Those kids are amazing," and boy, is that ever true.
I don't remember being that put together when I was 18. Have another group of put-together people now. These folks have a reason.
That's right. That's right, they all share the passion.
Yeah.
Got them where they are now. I don't know if this is good TV or not, but this is what we have to offer.
Worried about the commercial break here?
Yeah, that would have been a perfect time for a commercial break.
Do you do little dances? We do a little Toyota song. Get the Dairy Queen to advertise?
Well, I think we are settled in. Dr. Webb, do we have a few words of introduction here?
Sure do, we have a, we have a big night tonight. We are celebrating many of our 25-year employees and a number of our retirees. We have so many 25-year employees to celebrate, we actually split them into two groups, two different nights. So we have a number of our principal leaders here that will be giving shouts out for all of our 25 and retiree employees.
Excellent.
So we're going to kick it right off. You guys know the order from the email that you got from us, so let's take it away.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I am Connie Gerling-Squire, I'm the director of early learning and equity in the district, and I am so very proud and so very sad to be here to talk about these wonderful people. First of all, Diane Check, who has been an assistant with us in early learning, she is literally in class with ECFE right now. She is brilliant. In her 25 years, she has connected with the hearts of our children, and she has contributed her talents and her crafts to what we do in early learning, and we congratulate Diana in her 25 years. Add to other retirees who are not with us this evening, but I want to acknowledge Judy Marty. You may know Judy as an ECFE early childhood teacher. She's been teaching for more than 30 years. She is blessed in sharing her career with her dedicated coworkers that she now considers her friends. The time she spent with ECFE truly helped her grow, not only to ignite that passion in learners that she had, the honor of working with, but to ignite that passion in herself, to improve and positively change the world. So from the mouths of early learning, thank you for a fulfilling career. Sincerely, Judy Marty. She thanks you all and this community. Lori Reinert is also retiring. Lori is an early childhood screening nurse. She is the one that connects with every family before kindergarten. She's worked for South St. Paul for the last seven years and 25 other years in early learning environments. Her fun fact is that she's spent a year traveling with a friend bicycling westward down the Pacific coast, ended up in Hawaii. I'm not sure how she is up there. But she looks forward to more travel in the near future. So congratulations to Lori.
She knows a secret way.
I guess. All right. Now, my friends, going to start with Rosie Crumery. Rosie Crumery is our Administrative Assistant for Early Learning. This lovely lady right here. She started in December of 1985 at Washington Elementary in the Family Focus Program and apparently has many memories. She's been the beating heart of our early learning, ECFE, screening, preschool, through generations of families. Her amazing organizational skills and her connections with this community have led to our hugely successful safety fairs. You might have been a participant in safety fairs where thousands of people over the years have come through for activities and ideas and how to keep their family safe through the summer. This has been part of what she has done. She's helped to create baby showers and classes. She runs a smooth, warm, and welcoming office. And the thing is, I have had the pleasure of watching Rosie be able to talk with families and say things to parents that none of us usually would be able to say. Of course, you need to have that book before you leave. Put that phone down and here's a book for you. Because we know how important early learning is and this beating heart of our office is going to be desperately missed.
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything, Rosie? All right. Now, at the very same time, our Dawn Ren is also retiring as the Early Learning Coordinator. She started in South St. Paul in 1986, teaching a massive six-hour work week when she started in preschool. She had been in Chicago for 13 years. She started with a diversity group that we had in our community at the time. I have gotten to know Dawn and she brings such a calm, quiet strength to her classrooms and to our early learning team and to her leadership. She has continued to learn and absorb new ideas and strategies as a leader and an advocate for early learning. She is a Minnesota Reading Corps internal coach and has a deep connection to literacy for our families. She's helped to implement our free voluntary pre-K program that we are crossing over and have served literally thousands of four-year-olds in South St. Paul now. Her impact will sustain long after our Dawn is not in our office. Now, before I say what you plan to do, would you like to say anything? Great.
I just want to say thank you to all of you, to the school district, for the opportunity to work here and learn and grow and just have the joy of being with kids and working with such wonderful people like Connie. And to be supported by all of you and Dr. Webb. And it's bittersweet, but you know, you kind of know when it's time, so. Thank you. And my husband said to go Packers.
So I have these lovely certificates for you. My husband tells me every morning to enjoy my Rosie Dawn. So every day when I come into the office, I will be doing that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board, for having me here. I'm Mark Fenton, the Director of Facilities. I'm here to congratulate two of my staff members, Tony Van Bilt, that's worked here for 25 years. He's a hard-working individual that's super supportive and willing to do anything that's asked. Right, Bill?
Yes, sir.
But I'd like to congratulate Tony on 25 years and look forward to working with him for the next, you know, 15 or 20 years, hopefully. And I'm also here to congratulate Joe Gerton. He's retired. He was with us for about six, seven years. I didn't get to know him very well. He was only here for about five months. But he's a hard-working, dedicated individual. And anytime we have questions, he's always willing to pick up the phone and answer when we call him. He's at home relaxing from knee replacement, but he's doing well. And I'm going to see him this summer over in northern Wisconsin. So just want to congratulate him on a great retirement, a healthy one. So, thank you.
Good evening, Board and community of South St. Paul. I'm Kelly Tetrick, Director of Special Services, and I am very honored and pleased to be introducing you to two retirees and one 25-year, if they want to come up. First of all, I just have to say this is an exceptional group. I am just so happy to have worked with all of these folks. First up is Dawn Green. And Dawn, Dawn has worked for 25 years here in the district. She started as a Title I actually support way back when she started. She moved on to Kids Choice. I don't think it was Kids Choice at that point. Was it called, I can't remember, After School Care, Before Care? But then she actually found her forever home in special education, where she has worked as a special education paraprofessional at Capoja for, I don't even know how many years now, but she is one of those support staff. She supports staff. She supports kids. She is just one of the life of Capoja. So congratulations, Dawn, on 25 years and I look forward to more years together. So congratulations. And Tim Geisberg. Tim, if you want to come up? Tim was hired back in 1994 as a school psychologist, where he worked at Lincoln Center, early childhood special ed, the junior and the senior high. He had the entire district in 1984. Then in 2008, the district decided, well, we'll hire someone to work at middle school, junior high then, and the high school. So Tim was then assigned to Lincoln Center and Capoja, where he was our school psychologist at both buildings ever since then. During his time in the district, Tim did a lot of different roles. He was a district wraparound coordinator, which, if you think back to those years, it was wraparound services for kids and we've kind of come back around to all of that. So he worked in that capacity. He was on the Dakota County Mental Health Collaborative, which is a big job as well. He also attended a lot of Dakota County Special Ed Coordinator meetings, Assistant Director meetings, and was very connected in the community of special education. Tim actually officially retired back in September, or fall of 2020 here. So he's been retired for a little bit. While he does miss his colleagues in South St. Paul, he has been fortunate to see his daughters and grandson and some relatives that have had kind of some pre-existing conditions. So they've all been safe, had some good times together so far. He's been busy in retirement with woodworking projects. He built a loft bed for his granddaughter. He did an elaborate fireplace surrounded at his house or cabin. I just saw a picture of it. It's amazing. I may have to talk to you about that at one of my, somewhere in my house. In March, he went to Florida. His volunteer work has been limited, but he will plan to do more volunteer work. And future plans include international travel to Norway, Sweden, and Denmark.
Wow.
He's also going to visit family. He's a Canadian originally. He's going to take a woodturning class to make some bowls and different objects and home improvement projects. And I know he also has his wife here this evening. But congratulations, Tim. We miss Tim greatly. Way to go. And Terry Lombach. She is a double whammy tonight. 25 years we're celebrating as well as her retirement. And Terry, everyone knows you are the life of the party over there, I think, at Capoja. I know Mr. Bretoy will attest to that as well. She was hired back in the district in 1996. She worked as a pair with Mary Lush, for those of you who remember Mary Lush. She's still around and working something for us. And at that time, we had what was called the K-plus program. I think that's where Terry was working. Kids getting special education were doing a half-day, because we had half-day kindergarten at that point. So she worked half-day at Lincoln and half-day at Capoja, because we had some programming between the buildings there. But then when we went to full-day kindergarten, Mr. Bretoy kind of said he really wanted her to stay at Capoja. So she decided that was a good fit. That's where her kids went to school and Terry has been there since. She'll miss the students, staff, and parents, because she says, everybody has just taught me so much. She, I just have to share this with you, because Terry has a retirement plan. Yep, I have a copy of it here, Terry. And it's really cute, because she's got Terry Jo Lombach's retirement plan, right? And she did share this with me. So number one, I'm very excited to be a grandma to a baby girl on June 11th, 2021. Number two, my husband and I will officially become snowbirds and spend five months at our home in Fort Myers, Florida. I know she's worked at that a long time. That's great. Number three, I will volunteer to help veterans. Then she's got food circled, shrimp and scallops. Then she has animals, manatees and dolphins. And then it says hobbies, swimming, reading, and gardening. Great retirement plan. So congratulations to all three. If you have any, anything you would like to say? Nope? All right.
Well, I'll just be brief. I do want to thank everybody here for all of your support over the years and the administration has always been supportive. And I worked for some people like Dave Metzen and John Lolliberty, Wayne Otto, and Judy Cameron hired me actually back in the day. So those are some, and Jane Stass, and we worked with. Some of those people are no longer with us, but it was really nice to be able to work with that group of people and thanks again.
Yes.
Best wishes.
Well, in elementary school, right now, we take a 30-minute mass break. Would you like to do that? Or shall we just finish?
Let's go.
We'll just go. Okay. So, good evening, school board, Dr. Webb, and guests. My name is Terry Bretoy. I'm the principal at Capoja. And if I could have Chris, Janelle, Kristen, Janelle, and Reed come up, please. If you could all stand up here together. Teachers don't necessarily like to be recognized in front of adults. I don't know if you know this. In front of kids, they're just fine, but adults, it's a whole nother thing. So to have this many Capoja staff here tonight to be recognized is something special. And so first, I'm going to talk a little bit about our 25-year employees, our warm demanders. Noelle Cheerhart, who's an EL teacher for us, cannot be here tonight, but she fits into this category of exceptional people. And that's what you're going to hear tonight, is exceptional people. Chris Kirchner. Chris, you step forward. I know they know who you are, since you've been around for 25 years. Chris informed me that 25 years ago, that there was a board member in the room when they were hired, her and Janelle, and that is Mrs. Lolliberty, was on the interview team way back when. And so I thought that was a special connection tonight. So it's fun to see your babies come full circle.
It's so great to see their faces.
Right? Chris, I talk about being a warm demander. Chris had, the environment that she creates in her room is exceptional. And Chris has been out for a number of days and her kids have dearly missed her. And she shared with me today, on her first day back after being out, COVID protocol was broken, because every single kid came up and hugged her. And not just the little glad-you're-back pat on the back. These were extended hugs. And so that's what Chris creates in her classroom, is that sense of love and support that our kids need. And they showed that to her today. So I want to thank Chris for not only providing that to this year's group, who so desperately needed it, but every single year, it's a wonderful environment. So Chris Kirchner, everybody. Janelle Johnson, please step forward. Yes, she does not like even that. So oddly enough, when I walked up the stairs, I see Janelle with her gradebook and she's grading things with her red gradebook outside. And that's, that's who Janelle is. Janelle is one staff member who does not let one minute go by without making an attempt to impact kids. And whether it's a rah-rah speech, or whether it's, I'm going to teach you this standard, or you just need a hug, she does not let one minute go by. They cannot escape Janelle Johnson and in education. And so that is how she is one of our warm demanders down at Capoja. So Janelle Johnson, everybody. And then warm demander number three is Kristen Sassy. Kristen, step forward. It's so hard to even call her Kristen. She is sassy and she demands love and care from her kids. She is one of the happiest people that I've ever met on this planet. And she spreads that love and joy to her kids and to staff. And if you don't, if you ever want to come down and visit her classroom, once we're out of this pandemic, and just see the love and care that she shares with her kids, it's extraordinary. And she's also provided the two bouncers in the back of the room and at the doors. Those are two of her kids, yes. So anyways, Kristen Sassy, tonight, give her a round of applause. I hope you could stay there, Capoja staff. Okay, so if I could have Janelle Rao step forward, and I'm looking in the camera, it's all backwards to me. So, okay, there you are. So Janelle, yeah, don't do that to me. It's been a long meeting already. Janelle has been with our district for 19 years, 26 total in education. Her career, she says, followed a musical form called Rondo. Stay with me. First seven years, she taught music in Oseo, five years of childcare, five years of teaching music in South St. Paul. You can just get the beat going now. Nine years of teaching kindergarten and six years of teaching music. So Rondo is when you come back to the refrain, over and over and over again. And what a beautiful way for a music teacher to lay out a career. She, her plans for retirement are obviously traveling, reading, and time with her family and her grandson. I've known Janelle for most of my career here in South St. Paul and I actually had her son in fourth grade. And my last point today will be about how kind this woman is. And her son is one of the kindest sons on the face of the planet, too. So not only being a great teacher, but an awesome parent as well. Favorite memory, and I somewhat share this, but we have this Veterans Day program you may have heard about. On any given year, there's 1,000 people in the gym and to stand up in front of 1,000 people and direct kids singing is something that she will remember forever. So I want to thank her for her gifts there, too. And, and Janelle, I just have to say, I mentioned kindness. In this day and age, in this pandemic we've been in, to have everlasting kindness in your heart is something that I value. You always see the good in people. You always see the good in situations. And you've been, quite honestly, a dream to work with over these years. So you deserve everything that you will get in retirement. So thank you so much. She will sing you a sonnet. Reed Siegling, where is he? You're, you're not an easy one to miss, are you, Reed? Reed, don't do that to me. Reed has been in education for 39 years. And I asked Reed for his kind of resume, where he's been and what he's done. And I can pass you out copies, but it's fairly extensive. Crossing several states, Indiana, South Dakota, Washington, Minnesota. He spent time as our varsity basketball coach, as you know, and as. He spent time as our varsity basketball coach, as you know, and as a FIAD teacher in several buildings. I was lucky enough to have him come back to Capoja for his final year. And Reed listed off all of these, just kind of where I've been and what I've done. And I just said, "Well, what's your favorite memory, though, about, you know, spending time with kids?" And you know what he said? He said, "Open gym." He said, "Open gym, just hanging out with kids, and spending time with them, and seeing them develop." Not all the success he had on paper, but it was really about relationships with kids. Reed, Reed also, hold on, Reed, I got a lot for you, Reed. Reed actually, yeah, he is, it's bittersweet about retirement, but June 15th, he's going to Alaska. So I think he's going to get over it. He and his wife, right? Deep sea fishing. Other things he's going to do are, he wants to go to France and check out Normandy Memorial. Just a lot of free time, getting better at golf and fishing. I talked about his fond memories, and I just want to thank Reed. We talked about kindness. He is one of the kindest men I've ever met. Your professionalism, his inner strength, his collaboration, and quite honestly, for not sweating the little things. You've taught me a lot. You're a true gentleman, my man. And I'm thankful for our time together and what you've given to our kids in South St. Paul over the years. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. If I may, everybody, I'd like to take this opportunity to personally, personally, say thank you for the opportunity to come to South St. Paul 21 years ago. The main reason why I came here, and the main motive for me to come here, was basketball. Over the years, things have changed. Things have changed a lot. There was a time where if you were hired as a coach, that was a no-no. But what are you doing? You've got your priorities wrong. You should hire him as a teacher, and a coach is secondary. But I think what we've learned is, what society has learned, that is that coaching is teaching in its purest form. And when you see what happened with Apex and with what we just did in a fundraiser, they asked that all the teachers be called coaches. And that's kind of been a trend. So I am, I do not in any way want to say sorry for coming as a coach. It was a challenge when I got here. It's been a lot of work, but a lot of fun. And most recently, with being at Capoja and working with the elementary kids, it's been a pleasure. And I just want to say thank you to Terry, to Dave, to everybody, to Chad, who works extremely hard as the athletic director. I hope it's, I hope it's been good for you, because it's been good for me and my wife. Thank you very much.
That's the end, huh?
We have maybe one more round of applause.
Can I just say, too, this is an unbelievable tradition. South St. Paul has some great traditions, and I hope this one never stops. As I said, some of these people were hesitant to just be, stand up here and be recognized. I think it's a fantastic thing that we continue to do. Not only longevity, but excellence in education. That's what you have in the room. So thank you for all of us.
Terry, Terry.
Yes.
I just feel bad that Reed never saw you shoot the three-point shot.
Oh, let's not go there. Okay. There's still video out there somewhere, so. Thanks, Bill.
If there was, I would pay for it.
Yes, I know.
Have a great night. Thank you for joining.
Thank you, everybody.
Hi, cute girls.
Once again, we'll give them a couple of minutes to...
I love you right back.
Have a great night.
I know.
Yeah, I used to...
All right, have a good night.
Do you want to skip yours?
As Mr. Breitoy said, that's a wonderful tradition that we will continue on.
Oh, absolutely.
For forever. Why not? Why not? It really shows the dedication and the passion of the teachers that we have here that really make this district what it is. So it's the least we can do to celebrate them when they reach these milestones.
So Chris, my question is, did Esther set a new world's record for the quickest hat-trick in a quality action?
Yes, she thought we should get her a chair or something.
She was there a long, I wonder if she's going to have time for scholastics with all these extracurriculars?
I wish her the best.
I believe Esther can do it.
I think she can.
From what we saw, I think she'll be just fine. So on with the agenda. We have the public listening session. Again, this, this couple of weeks, there were no submissions, so we have nothing to report on there. Again, we just invite everyone to go out to the school website and submit any questions that they have, that the board will then review and report on at the next meeting. You're also welcome to email or call us. All of that is out on the website. And there may be some changes coming up with that, but at this point, that's the best way to get ahold of us, and we would love to hear from you. And now Superintendent Webb will provide some highlights from around the district.
And if you're okay just skipping mine for now, we'll try to get back on track a little bit with our other guests, and then we can close.
Perfect.
When we all give our updates.
Perfect. That sounds good. The consent agenda tonight is the financial claims and staffing. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes, and the consent agenda is passed. We have the policy review, which is 30-some policies that are on their second meeting of review. Again, we review them for two meetings and then approve them on the third. So if you're interested in reading them, I sometimes read the names of all the policies, but we don't have time to go through all 30 whatever of them. So it's out on the school website, and you can certainly bring any questions to us if you have them. Next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System, commonly known as the acronym ATPPS. The plan is effective July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2023. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we will pass it off to Chad Schmidt and Jen Sexhauer, who have a little presentation for us about them.
Great. Thank you, Chair Walker, members of the board, Superintendent Webb, and South St. Paul community. I am Chad Schmidt, Director of Learning, and I'm here with our ATPPS TDE Coordinator, Jen Sexhauer. And tonight, we are here to present the revised ATPPS Plan, which is a letter of agreement between the district and the Teachers Association. And we are seeking approval of this plan tonight. Jen is here, and she will give a brief overview of the plan itself, and then we'll take any questions, and then we'll go on from there. Go ahead, Jen.
All right, thank you. So the ATPPS, or Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System, an optional program through MDE, has four main areas: the Career, Ladder, and Achievement Options and Site Goals, Job-Embedded Professional Development through PLCs, Peer Review and Teacher Evaluation, and Teacher Practice Credits. For the first area, the Career, Ladder, and Achievement Options, each site has a site goal, and this site goal is set by our Building Leadership and Instruction Team. And the other portion of this part of the plan is the Individual Growth and Development Plan, which our teachers fill in at the beginning of the year with their professional goals. This part of the plan is tied to salary schedule. The next piece of the plan is the Professional Learning Communities, which happen every Tuesday morning in our district. We have set aside 45 minutes every Tuesday where everybody in the district meets with their professional learning community. This is something that is required by the Teacher Development and Evaluation Plan for the state. And we embed this into our HBS Plan as an incentive program to increase the collaborative inquiry with our teachers. The next part of the plan is our Peer Review and Teacher Evaluation. This is where our teachers are observed by peer coaches twice a year, and by their summative evaluator or their administrator, once every three years, unless you're a probationary teacher, then it's three times a year. The, this part of the plan works on the teacher's professional goals from the IGDP. The last part of the plan is the Teacher Practice Credits. This is the part of the plan that increases teacher agency and choice as to how they would like to embed professional development into their work. There's various categories where teachers can choose to do work around those categories. And then, based on the number of hours in that category, they earn credit for their Teacher Practice Credits. Our current plan, teachers can earn up to nine credits, or $900, in that part of the plan.
So the entire plan is around improving teaching and improving learning. And so this is part of that work of professional growth, where teachers have lots of opportunities to extend their learning, that they then bring into the work they do with our students, and that supports, that supports the learning of our students. And so, as a final word?
So our district's been doing this since 2005. We were fortunate that we started from the beginning, doing a very strong foundation of a plan, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from our teachers in the creation of our plan and the revising every three years. And we just continue to increase engagement by teachers and that job-embedded professional development. And we are fortunate enough to have a committee in the district that continues to revise this and meets monthly to talk about different parts of the plan, to keep the integrity and the growth of the plan continuing. And this year, when voted on by the Teachers Union, we had overwhelming support, so.
And so Jen works as one of our four peer coaches. She works with the other three peer coaches. They're a tight-knit team that does kind of the day-to-day work of this plan. And then we have this steering committee that meets monthly, that Jen leads, takes feedback from a broad group of users. And then, as we get to a revision process every few years, we build those revisions and improvements into the plan. And as you can see, it has strong support from the Teachers Association, and we are asking for the board's support tonight in approving this plan and this letter of agreement for the next two years. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I remember, I was on the board when this program came on, and I'm so happy and pleased that it is still a functioning unit, and that the staff obviously is highly approving it, you know, with the Teachers Union, you know, giving it a big thumbs up. So thank you to everyone who's participated in this, all the, all the staff, you, Jen, Chad, you know, getting all this stuff going and getting another contract going. So thank you, and I appreciate all of the teachers' work that they have contributed over these last 16 years into this program. So thank you for keeping it going.
Thank you. As someone who reads the work and the reflection work around what the teachers are doing, there's a lot of great things happening because of the plan, so thank you.
Good.
I have one question, Chad. Just out of curiosity, how are your peer coaches selected? Do they apply, or?
They do, yes. So coaches serve a four-year term. And so anytime those terms come up, we post for a position, just like we post for anything else, internal or external. In this case, the peer coach positions are internal positions. And so any licensed teacher in the district is welcome to apply. We take those candidates, we run an interview process, and then select a candidate off of that.
Thank you.
It's recommended that they're tenured.
Yes, thank you.
Have been in the district for five years, preferred.
Additional pieces about that?
Yes, they are internal.
Details.
Good.
Chris, can I just add one comment?
Yes, please do.
So just a shout-out to both Chad and Jen tonight. You know, they're both detail-focused, highly engaged, interactive people with our staff. So the development portion of the TDE, of Teacher Development and Evaluation, that's our whole goal. We want to grow teachers to grow our kids. So thank you for your leadership for our program.
Thanks, Dr. Webb.
I also heard that this year's team is the best ever.
Well, I would agree. I would agree. Yes.
All right.
Any others?
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion after hearing the presentation? All right. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes, and the plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks again for coming in tonight.
Thanks.
Next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the continuance of teacher contracts for 2021, 2022. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none here, we'll pass it off to Kathy Miller, who has some points. Hi, Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. As part of our annual staffing process, we, administration identifies probationary teachers to retain and those who would attain tenured status for next school year. So the resolution in your packet this evening lists those probationary teachers to retain and those that would be tenured. Is there any questions?
No?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Any last discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes, and the contracts are approved. Thanks again, Kathy. The last business item is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution placing Nicholas Fox on an unrequested leave of absence. Do I, I'm sorry, Lisa, would you like to read that resolution?
Sure. It's a resolution placing Nicholas Fox on an unrequested leave of absence, be it resolved by the School Board of Special School District Number Six, that Nicholas Fox be and hereby is placed on an unrequested leave of absence as an Assistant Principal of Special School District Number Six on the grounds of discontinuance of position and financial limitations effective at the end of the 2020-2021 school year on June 30th, 2021 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A dot 40 subdivision 10 without pay or fringe benefits.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm looking for someone to move that resolution.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Kathy, would you like to say a word again?
Just a couple of comments. This resolution is a result of budget reductions that were approved earlier this spring. And so the resolution that was just read to you is placing Mr. Fox on an unrequested leave of absence.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Diaz.
Yes.
Inspector Roche.
Yes.
Inspector Weber.
Yes.
Inspector Lolliberty.
Yes.
Inspector Arndt.
Yes.
Inspector Felton.
Yes.
Chair Walker.
Yes.
That's seven ayes.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. That brings us to the informational items, and we'll start off to our right with Bill.
I have nothing tonight, Chair Walker.
Thank you. Monica?
Nothing for me either.
All right, thank you. Linda?
I feel like I had something, but I got all for clumped with the retirees and the 25 years and the kids that I, it's gone.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough. We're down to the other end with Wendy.
First, I'd like to put out a thank you to the Schultz-Kunahan family for this past Saturday, as they did their stride for Packer pride. I know it was mentioned earlier by our Activities Director, and just want to thank everybody who participated, volunteered to help. And it's a great program for our students that helps to aid students with financial assistance to be participating in athletic and activity events. So we thank their family. They've been doing it for several years. So thank you to the Schultz-Kunahan family for their Packer pride. And on a personal note, one of our former school, school members passed away recently, Mr. Vic Grabbel. He was back in my day, back in the '60s, '70s, early '80s. He was a teacher, a coach, and our family was personal friends with their family. So our thoughts go out to the Grabbel family in the loss of their father. And also, I want to put out a reminder, the Educational Foundation... And also, I want to put out a reminder, the Educational Foundation Scholarship Banquet will be presented virtually again this year. They are giving out $425,000 to 104 students who will be receiving those scholarships. You can watch it online. You can connect through the Education Foundation website, or you can go on the School District website, go under their Secondary Building, and you will find a link there also. It will be, be done up on this Wednesday evening. So, I want to put a early congratulations out to the 104 students who are getting the scholarships. And a huge thank you to the donors who have been so generous over these many, many years of giving to our students to help them prepare for their future. And just a quick reminder, everyone have a safe Memorial Day weekend coming up. And give an extra shout-out to all of the, if you have any family members who may have been involved in serving our country. We appreciate everything that they've done. So, we look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Wendy. John?
Sure. Real quick, I want to draw attention and to having watched the virtual academic awards this month, as they were put out, and just recognizing all the students still finding remarkable success this year amongst a very, very challenging year, and the perseverance they did to be able to maintain their great success and their academics here in South St. Paul. And then, an extra shout-out for watching the encore presentation of A Wrinkle in Time this week.
Okay, good. Thank you, John. And Nikki?
Congratulations to all of the students and staff who are retiring or had 25 years' service. And to the kids tonight, too. I'd also like to recognize the kids that weren't here tonight. I'd like to recognize the kids who are shy, the kids who struggle, the kids who maybe aren't involved in ECA but have interests of their own, kids who don't get awards or scholarships but are still amazing people. You have heart, and you have talents of your own. And it may not fit into the way that the system is set up, but we know you're out there. And we wish you well, too, in your life and in your further endeavors. School isn't always for everybody, but it's okay. It's okay. And I just want you to know that you're in my heart. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Nikki. We do not have a supplemental agenda tonight, so I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Do you want a quick superintendent update?
Yes.
We can go either way.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. Let's have the superintendent updates. How quickly we forget.
We're out of order.
Yeah, it's all good. Yeah, be careful what you ask for. So, just end-of-year updates. You know, I always get choked up when I see the graduating class and the hats being tossed. And I'm just hoping for wonderful weather a few weeks from now on, both the 8th and the 10th for our CLC and high school graduations. Chuck made a great recommendation a few weeks ago that just said, hey, let's do our best to take all the precautions we can to make sure that every kid that wants to walk across the stage isn't in quarantine when we get to commencement day. So, so I said, great idea, let's get it into action. So, this Wednesday will be our last in-person day in school with our seniors. We have some incredible summer programs. Chad Schmidt, Dr. Schmidt, Ms. O'Reilly, each of our principals and vice principals are growing our summer programs. You know that there's some additional state funds that's helping to support that as well this summer, this summer and next summer. So, we'll continue to grow extended learning opportunities for our students. There's a long list here. So, I just encourage parents with questions to reach out to your teacher, reach out to our office, just stay connected with us. Pick up the phone if you have additional questions. We're happy to walk you through anything that you might need clarity and clarification on. We have a lot of great things happening this summer for kids. As you know, as owners of the Central Square site, we will be beginning to manage the site July 1. And we were actually going to shut for about 10, 10, 11 days to bring in some new flooring and new counters. And we're just going to spiff the place up a little bit for the opening few weeks. And then, we'll open with a, I like to say with a big splash at Central Square with senior programming and activities and all the rest. Our communications folks have really helped to build wonderful flyers, information on our websites, so much more to come. We have a number of highlights from around the district. Mental health is always a really big thing, but especially coming out of a pandemic. We're putting a lot of focus there and energy there this month. Capoja recognized the month with week-long events, just to teach kids about different methods for mindfulness and positive messaging. Lincoln Center had a great food drive to just help the neighbors, Inc., and to serve people in our community. 5th grade were the winners, 664 cans of kidney beans. There you go. So, you never know what's going to push you above the line there, right? Celebrating IB, we couldn't have our whole gymnasium filled with all of our personal projects in 10th grade and many of our PYP exhibitions and all the like. So, we decided to record the content and get it out to you, and you can go right on our website and see the projects virtually. So, what a great idea, again, being creative, to stay connected with our community. We have a number of upcoming calendar events. You heard people commenting, Wendy gave the shout-out to our Scholarship Banquet, $425,000. That's real dollars going to our kids that are graduating this year. That's in addition to when they go to their post-secondary institution. Oftentimes, they'll get additional scholarships on top of these. So, we're, just want to be thankful to all of our donors, community support, for putting our kids first. There's no school on Memorial Day, the last day for seniors, technically is June 4th. But then, we have our commencement ceremony, June 8th for CLC, our Community Learning Center, and June 10th on our football field, the last day of school, is also our graduation night. And we're hoping for some really good weather that night, so. Just a closing comment. You've seen some wonderful kids here, wonderful staff. I just wanted to give our students a shout-out, our staff a shout-out, our families that have been the glue to get our kids back to school, get them through distance learning, our teachers, our, all of our coaches, our cooks, our custodians, all of our clerical, our staff up and down our school district. We've had an amazing, challenging year, and we made it. We're in the last couple of weeks of the year, but we couldn't have done it without a team effort pulling together for our kids. So, thanks to the board, thanks to our community, thanks for pulling together this year. You are awesome. Materials and minutes are here. We'll go back to you, Chris.
Thank you. And I certainly didn't mean to snub you back then, so. Glad you came up with the, with the update. Now, we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes, and we are adjourned.